A TSI school previously. And so she has been a great support through this process. And you'll see Mrs. Serrano is here for Rutherford. And Mrs. Kozlachuk is here for the middle school. And unfortunately, Mrs. Gallage was going to be here, but she had a death in her family and is not able to be here tonight. So I will turn it over to all of you. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Mrs. Nocturne.
Okay, so I am going to go over the COOK plan, okay? The one thing you will notice, since I have facilitated it, I've worked with Teresa and her team and the principals. You're going to see a lot of connections from one building to the next, which is kind of new. So it builds on Cook, Rutherford, and then the middle school. And then what Teresa did was the DCEP plan also. When you look at the DCEP plan, you're going to see a lot of similarities with DCEP plan and what's going on in the three buildings. Okay, so Cook is our P two building, okay? It is, as Teresa said, a CSI school, okay? And if you return, okay? One of their focus this year is on evidence-based interventions for student improvement, okay? Collaborative approach involving teachers, administrators, and families. And they are focusing on key concepts and skills in math, primarily part, part, whole, which we can talk about number bonds and writing instruction, okay? And then commitment to data-driven decision-making or DDI. So you're going to see throughout the presentation and throughout our plans, you'll see DDI is data, decision, instruction, okay? Okay, as I said, our focus in math is part, part, whole. And what Ginny and the Director of Elementary Education Keith and her team really did was do a deep dive into their data. And what they identified is our kids were struggling with part, part, whole. Or let's say, for instance, you have a hole is 10. They have four apples and six apples. So conceptually, they were struggling with that visually, they were struggling with that across the board. So what COOK decided to do is they're going to start and determine how many of our kids are able to be successful with that concept. And then students who are not successful with that concept, that is where we're going to focus. They're going to use exit tickets, okay, to assess the success of the students. And the other thing is number bonds, okay? They also decided, and one of the things, as I say, we're looking through their data, determined that write-in instruction, which really has been identified, I'm going to say over the last 10 years, that Monticello, we, you know, our reading programs, they're getting really good. But a lot of the reading programs that we use, like Wonders, I forgot what they use at Cook. What's the stuff I said? I forgot.
Yes, okay.
But they really don't focus on writing. So what COOK is doing is really putting a lot of support in that. And they are using the Hudson Valley Writing Program, okay? They did some training over the summer with the teachers. We started with kindergarten. We will work with our first grade teachers this year and then roll it out to second grade. But it really is using writing to kind of work on their critical thinking skills and just basic foundational writing, okay? They're working on, okay, key instructional strategy too is writing instruction. Again, partnership with Hudson Valley Writing Project, reading like a writer, okay? So using their reading skills to write, okay? Integration with math and ELA instruction, grade level specific professional development. As I said, focus on foundational writing skills and alignment with New York State Learning Standards. Next slide.
Open court.
Open court, that's it, okay? Some of the changes that are going to take place at Cook. Last year, they introduced an enrichment program after school that was drama-based. So they are going to bring that in as an after-school program, which will incorporate writing, okay? OG or Orton Gellinham will be used with our struggling readers after school. Small group instruction, differentiated learning approaches, parent communication strategies. Ginny has done a great job with really sending out information, especially about their attendance. Weekly, Sunday, they get, they get like a parent square talking about the benefits of sending their kids to school and, and what impact that has on it. So she's going to focus with writing this year and then community engagement initiatives, how to get our community involved. And I'm going to turn it over to Rutherford, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So for Rutherford, as it was mentioned, we're a TSI school. We're a 35 building. We're going to focus a lot on evidence-based interventions for student improvement. And this will be done with the work of our instructional coaches, working with our year one and year two teachers, as well as veteran teachers that might just want to learn some new strategies. So we will continue to encourage that. We'll have collaboration teams, meetings where we're going through the data. And we're hoping to have those every five to six weeks. And this is in addition to the half days that we, the half day PLC meetings that we will be having. So we will be having on data meetings. And the emphasis is that continuum. So at the Cook School, they're looking at the part, part, whole. Over at Rutherford, we're going to focus on that fact fluency, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, fractions, and place values. And of course, again, the commitment to data-driven decision-making. Thank you. So the focus on concrete mathematical models. And it seems like, you know, one year we focus on ELA, the next year we focus on math. And it's sort of like, the focus this year goes back on the math because our data shows that the numbers were over there. Our assessments, the students' performance, their performance decreased when it came to math. So the emphasis is on fact fluency. And as I said, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, place value. We are going to try to implement exit tickets. So we can see our, our, our students really understanding the concepts that are being taught. So the exit tickets will help us assess, do we need to do a reteach? Is this something that maybe the majority of the class did not understand? So now we're going to teach it to the entire group? Or is it just a small group of students? And then we're going to move that into our tier two small group instruction. So the exit tickets are really going to drive the instruction that's happening in the classroom. This is the third year that we're cooperating in after-school tutoring program. So this year, we hope to start it a little bit earlier in the past, when the money's come in. So it's sometime in January that we start rolling out our tutoring program. So we're hoping to get started sometime in November. And differentiate a small group instruction that always happens during our win time, where students go into tier two or that AIS teachers are coming in and pulling students out for tier three instruction. As I said, after-school tutoring program will be taking place. We will be tapping into our instructional coaches district-wide. We're going to have those grade level team collaborations when we're meeting and hopefully having a discussion on data. Our students improvement, improving, where is it that we need to really focus? PLC work will continue this year. Next slide, please. And finally, progress monitoring. So we're having those weekly grade level meetings and those happen with a grade level once a week. Creation and analysis of targeted exit tickets. So our teams will be working on what do those exit tickets look like for every lesson? Benchmark assessments, which do occur every four to five weeks. Professional development with the support of our instructional coaches. And we hope that with all of this implemented, we can increase, we can increase our student understanding of key concepts. And we're going to hopefully sometime April, May, look at doing some regular vertical alignment meetings with K two teachers. So having our 35 teachers meet the K one, two, to see how things progressing, what do we need to focus on? And continue with our parent communication through monthly moves of others. Any questions?
I do. These exit tickets, so if you have half the class, they're doing well, they advanced, the other part of the class, you try to catch them up.
It sounds, yes, essentially, that's what we try to do. And we try to do that within our win time. So the exit tickets prove that some students need additional support. They can potentially go into the tier two. If that does not help, then potentially they can go into a tier.
Okay.
It all depends on the progression, how the students are doing.
Okay, the other students are advanced and they'll just keep advancing?
Though, not so much advancing, maybe diving a little deeper into the concept that they're currently working on. So having a greater understanding of how to apply the concept.
Yeah, they master that, then why not?
And then hopefully receive some enrichment. It hasn't happened in the past, I'll be very honest with you. A lot of our focus is always on the students are underperforming. So we're trying to shift that mindset where, where we can really support our students that are performing at grade level or above grade level. How can we provide, provide them with enrichment?
So what about the ones that excel?
Those are the ones that weren't, I say, performing at or above, those are the students that are excelling. So those are the students, and now we want to move ahead. Yeah.
Okay, got you, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Hi, so for the middle school, you're going to hear a lot of the same things. We're also focusing on math, fact fluency mastery. So to carry on from what they're doing at Rutherford, we want to make sure the kids are fluent. Variables and expressions, equations and equalities, multi-step problem solving. Oftentimes, we're finding that it's, that they're not reading or not understanding what they're reading in the multi-step problem. So dissecting those so they understand what they're being tasked with. Number relationships and real-world algebraic applications. We're going to use the concrete models and differentiated instruction. Our kids also get WIN and AIS as needed. So well, all kids get WIN, some kids get AIS. And we're doing the regular assessment and data analysis to guide the instruction. Thank you. We're prioritizing the New York State Learning Standards, grade six through eight. So we're really focusing on what are those essential standards that kids need to know? And how are we going to get them to understand that? The kids are all going to take a needs assessment, an individualized needs assessment in math so that we know these, these kids need this particular thing. And then we're going to teach it to them in an after-school program that we're calling Panther Strong. It's different than our regular tutorials that we offer twice a week per grade. That'll be, you, you missed this particular skill, so come to Panther Strong, we're going to teach it to you, we're going to get you solid on that. So it's a fluid interaction. Maybe you need to come for two or three weeks and then you're done. Maybe you need to come one session, oh, now I get it, and you move on. We're also doing regular progress monitoring. The Director of Secondary Ed, Laura Zambrusa, and I are having five-week progress monitoring meetings with WIN and AIS teachers. We're also offering some professional development. At every faculty meeting, Mrs. Bedford is presenting a key strategy that all teachers can use in their content area. Critical thinking, inferencing, anything you can pull from state assessment. So teachers just have a little refresher on, this is something I can apply through my content area that'll help the kids on the state assessment. Because obviously, they only text in math and ELA. So social studies needs to know how to implement things that'll help in that area as well. We're working to encourage student participation on the assessments. Now that they're allowed to opt out, we're trying to get them to opt back in. So we've had lots of conversations with families on the importance of the test, what the tests are really used for, that it's not a part of your school grade, it's to help us determine what do your children need to learn and how can we get them to that level? I'm wearing some bracelets tonight. They, the kids are all excited about these rubber bracelets. So we're also incentivizing it, like, you know, you can do good on the test, do your best on the test. So we're going to give out bracelets to try to just promote a little excitement behind the task. I had a conversation with the faculty as well that we need to present, you know, our positive face forward about state testing, not like, all right, we're going to save this thinking, stay tucked again. Give the kids, you know, hey, we're going to do it, it's going to be great, and get them motivated to learn as well. Any questions?
I do. I like Panther Strong.
Thank you.
What, what happens if a child doesn't attend? Like, you tell them to attend, but they're like, I'm not going.
It's not mandatory, so then we'll bring it into their win time.
Okay.
When you, when you have back fluency mastery, can you give me, is that like times tables you're talking on?
Yeah. Yes, believe it or not, they don't all know their times tables yet. So we, we've got to get strong on that. And then for implementation support systems, we're going to have that high-quality tutoring at Panther Strong. It'll be two times a week, like I said, fluid groups. Ryan's here, our instructional coach is now located at the middle school. All the coaches are district-wide, but Ryan is with us, so he's going to do some embedded professional development. Like I said, Mrs. Bedford is going to do some tier one strategies. And then we're going to have the regular data review. Students are going to progress monitor themselves. So one of the goals in there, or one of the tasks that the teachers were given on opening day is to have the kids do progress monitoring in wins. So set a goal for yourself. It could be a relationship goal, a social emotional goal, but then also a data-driven goal as well. And we're going to keep giving those benchmark assessments to track how the students are progressing and then give stakeholder surveys as needed.
And just so that you're all aware, these plans do have to be board-approved, so you'll see them on your agenda tonight. Once they are board-approved, we will post them on our website so that the community and parents have access to see them as well.
Any other questions around the presentation this evening?
I do have a question. So it's one, you focus on math, one, you focus on English?
Well, I think we're focusing on the areas that we feel, based on data, are weakest. So we're focusing on ELA and math. But through this plan, there's more of a focus on math this year because that's where we see the biggest deficit. But we're not forgetting about ELA, nothing is changing there.
What happens, okay, so we focus so much on math, but yet our ELA numbers come back bad, like?
Yeah.
It's just like, yeah, seesaw thing we're doing.
Right, and like I said, so, you know, instructionally, we're doing, we're focusing on both. In win time, we're focusing on both. In AIS, if a student needs tier two or tier three AIS, we're obviously focusing on both. I think these are things that, based on this plan, because what we're seeing when we look at the data as to why we were identified on this plan, these are the areas where we're the weakest. And so when the state looks at what are you doing to change? We have to identify some areas based on that data that we're going to focus on and see if it works. So, you know, as I said, it's a three-year plan. So for your one, Ms. Robert Pezer, if it's not working, because our math scores don't go up or our ELA scores come down further, then we have to readjust and figure something out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just add something?
Surely.
Sorry. One of the things the state has done over the past three years is when we started this three years ago, when I was, you know, TSI at the middle school, our goals were very broad, okay? They allowed us to be very broad. Working with the state over the past two years, they are getting us to really identify, like, part, part, whole. Three years ago, we didn't have to do that. It was like, improve that, that, that of all instruction, okay? So the state is really getting us to really identify those areas. But it doesn't mean that we're not focused on other areas in the building. But for the plan itself, we have to identify one specific thing.
Thank you very much, everybody, for coming in this evening, we appreciate it. Moving on from our presentation, we have our consent agenda, Ms. Gallagher.
I'd like to make motion to adopt consent agenda items F one through NY.
I have a second on that. Mrs. Mustowski, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mrs. Gallagher. Moving on from there, we have information reports in discussion or roundtable. Alan?
Nothing to report.
Thank you.
Well, nothing right now.
Unfortunately, Ashley got pulled out for a, a family transportation issue and Mr. Groden is not able to be with us this evening. But moving on to Belinda.
Nothing to report.
Bravo.
Nothing to report.
Victoria.
I go back down to little ones, so I get to see the theater programs like ASO in action. And it's so adorable and so much fun to watch the babies go out there and play and pick candlelight. Also, I'd like to say what a wonderful job the high school is doing with the, I don't know if you guys have seen the pictures online, with the senior barbecue and a lot of districts don't recognize their seniors. And I'm very thankful that here at Monticello, that we do recognize our seniors. And.
Have they been able to paint their parking lots based upon the construction?
Coming up shortly, I don't believe they have a firm date yet.
They'll eventually do.
Just, I think they cleared that about eight hours before the first day of school.
I noticed there was a lot of stuff still out there.
Is there, is there any way that, I'm not sure if you have it or not, that the schools that we are liaising on, if we can get the parent square notifications? Like, there's something over at St. John Street, the little barbecue thing they had.
We can, I believe we had that last year.
Yeah, but they stopped, it maybe changed.
So if we could look inside Amory to get the board liaisons from the reorg meeting added on to the parent square?
Just so we have notifications to see what's going on in our.
Notifications for those.
Yeah, I think there's a way to, but I, I don't know if they can do it for just the group of liaisons or maybe like all board members.
Okay, yeah, just so we know.
Yeah, they did it last year, I don't know.
Yeah, they did it last year.
When I was on Chase, Chase added me into whatever their thing was, or middle school, without the parent square reflected in the middle school.
That way we can see what's going on.
Even if you're just added as a parent or something like that.
They did, I don't know how they did it, they did do it.
Anything else, Victoria?
Good job on opening day, I'm curious to hear how the cell phone thing went today.
It's coming up.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
So I just got a couple of things. I attended a super eval workshop, which I thought would be a little different than what it was. It turned out to be more like a training with regard to super eval, which we use. So I don't know if anybody downloaded all the, the agenda, which clicks into the PowerPoints and stuff. I thought if anybody was interested, especially any board members, that it might help with next year or just navigating through the system a little bit. So I did try to share that. I also just want to say that I'm very excited. We picked our call distinction nominations and I'm going to leave that to Dr. Evans when he gets there. And last but not least, the Sullivan County School Board Association received their nominees and our annual awards dinner is going to be on October 6, 2025. In addition to that, Sullivan County School Board has recently made a change to their bylaws. And through that, now we are required to have two delegates and one alternate. Previously, it was one delegate and one alternate. In addition to that, I, as the president, is no longer a voting member and I do not count as far as membership. So tonight, I'm asking if anyone is interested in stepping up. Ms. LaRusso, trustee LaRusso is one of the nominated delegates. And Anne Marie, if I'm wrong in any of this, please correct me, as the executor of the organization. And I need someone, then I need another delegate and another alternate put nominated, if anybody's interested. I will say that Ms. Riley, before she stepped out, said she was interested. I'm more than happy to nominate her in her absence. But I'm also would welcome anybody else that had interest in doing it.
Anybody else have any interest in it? Would you like to be an alternate or the?
Doesn't really matter.
The enthusiasm, so.
Well, you want to nominate Ashley as the.
I'll let Ashley be the delegate.
And then Alan would be the alternate? Is that work for you?
All right, so I write that down, so.
So we're going to, when we get down to the action items amended T12 to reflect those nominations. When it comes up.
That, thank you.
Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the, the district assembly on Wednesday. My work decided to come out of the woodwork and eat my life, but I hope your keynote speaker was very good. The schools look fantastic, obviously with the construction. But even with construction going on, those guys, I know they moved mountains to make parking lots and things back accessible. So thank you to everyone who pulled that off to get us back into school. I know we have a capital project update a little bit later on. But kudos to Mrs. Gallit, Ms. Morano, and everybody that was affected by building in your, work going on in your buildings. We know that it was tough to get everybody back into their rooms. I did stop by the Cook School on late Wednesday with Dr. Evans, just to take a quick peek into the rooms. They do look very nice. The hallways have two-by-two new ceiling tiles in them, which really kind of cleans up the space quite a bit. So there's still some work to go there, but they're moving forward. And thank you, everybody, for putting up with us with that. We hope that it really helps make a change in those classrooms moving forward, once everybody's finished up. So, good to have you here right now. On November 1st, we're pretty well ironed out to have our board roundtable retreat, sorry, our board retreat. That's really going to circle around what we're asking of directors, principals in their reports. Because next year, we're realistically probably going to be relooking at our vision, mission, goals for the district. The present ones have been sitting there for about five years. So we're going, our board retreat is going to focus around kind of what we're asking for in the light of next year redoing the vision, mission, and goals. So we can be asking for appropriate information to help guide us a year from now as to what we're looking at and the best things for the district at that point. So that, right now, is scheduled for November 1st, nine to three at present. But obviously, whenever we finish up, we finish up. So that's also coming up here shortly. Congratulations to our graduates of, our summertime graduates. We did have four summertime graduates, thank you very much. And we spoke about it privately earlier, summertime regions grades are going to be available to parents.
Sometime early next week, but they can try calling tomorrow. It's possible they will be available tomorrow, but definitely by month.
Thank you so much. So that's kind of all I have at this present moment. So moving on from there, we do have our principal reports, first meeting of the month. So any questions, comments, concerns regarding surrounding the principal reports, Victoria?
Hi, so. I have a question, I always ask this. So the Cook report, I see the attendance protocols. Is it the attendance protocol for all the schools or is that just Cook?
That is just Cook.
So what's the attendance protocol for all the other schools?
They've established them, but we're going to be finalizing them at the September principals' directors' meeting.
And then they will, they'll send it out to us?
Yeah.
I really like this protocol here, it's very honest. And like the fact that they're inputting things into, where is it? School tool, the communications that they have, it's going to be very helpful. And hopefully, it's going to improve attendance. Thank you, that's it.
The St. John's report, the 4410 says there's 15 enrolled. That, I thought we had more than that classroom-wise. There were like three classrooms.
Oh, you're.
A computer just decided to be stolen.
So I guess, Ms. Fowler, you were, how many 4410 students that we have? That according to Ms. Raglia is 15? These are just the CPSE, right?
That doesn't sound right.
I thought we had two, we have two of 11. There are 12.
This, this number does not include any itinerant services students.
Oh, you had it. One, eight, one, 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 twelve of each, the number went down.
The number went down significantly.
Significantly, we, last year, we had two classrooms of each, and I think we had one classroom self-contained and one.
Why did it go down so much with the needs so high?
I don't know, those are all the kids that have been identified by CPSE are, are being served in our program. To Monticello, there's no waitlist, they're, they're all there.
But don't we, didn't we last year actually have children that were, should she lost from like your mother? Yeah, we're not doing that this year?
And we don't have the space this year. We, you know, we didn't have enough of our kids to open a second section, so we.
So what happens to our written, if we contacted SCD in order to?
It stays the same until they change it the following year. So because we produce.
So, because we produce our expenses, then the rate will go down. Um. Are there aware of the dark classrooms? SCD? I think so, that, it's part of the application. We have to submit every year. With the pre-K, we have to tell them how many classrooms, how many students. So, that's all in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, moving on from our principal reports, we have a uh, we did have a policy committee meeting prior to this meeting. And I will throw this over to Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley, so first uh, tonight on the agenda, the board will be doing second reading and adoptions. Of a amendment to the code of conduct that includes the definition of corporal punishment, we held the. Public hearing on that, I believe at the last meeting.
Yes.
Uh, and also a uh, changes to board policy eleven twenty R. Uh, regarding district records. We did have a very productive policy committee meeting tonight. Um, the uh, I think the biggest, certainly the longest policy that was discussed and determined to be put forward to the board for a first reading at the next meeting. Our proposed revisions to the wellness policy. Uh, Mr. Jasper presented to the policy committee. Uh, there was a uh, the wellness committee, uh, and, and uh, members of Sullivan eighty met in the spring. To review and revise and assess uh, the district's wellness policy. They had recommended uh, changes to go along with that, if you look in. The policy committee update, uh, that. Proposed uh, new wellness policy is there. So, uh, there's a lot to be processed there, however, the changes are highlighted, anything in red is coming out. Or if it's crossed out, it's coming out, anything in green is new. Um, a lot of it were, was, you know, updating names and positions. Uh, but there are some other things in there, particularly around social emotional learning, uh, that are new to the policy, so I wanna thank. Mr. Jasper and members of the wellness committee, I knew Ms. LaRusso you were on it, I don't know if any other board members were, but um. A very nice work on the policy, and then there's about four other policies primarily around updates to education law two D. Which is uh, state ed law that protects student privacy, student records privacies, uh, student records privacy. Uh, so there's some tweaks to some different privacy uh. Policies that will be coming your way for a first read at the next board meeting. And those all come to us from the New York State School Board Association. And the policy committee is also going to uh, gather more information from. Uh, the high school in particular on potential changes to the boundaries of policy. Coming soon.
Questions surrounding policy? Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, moving on from there, we have correspondence outcomes, um, there are none at this time. Then it's promesturial, your capital project update. Dr. Evans.
It's been a busy, busy summer of capital project work and um. I'm very pleased to, to uh, share with the board, as you probably already know, that uh. The twenty-four classrooms that were renovated between Chase and Cook Elementary School were all turned over to the district on Tuesday morning. Uh, they were. You know, say ninety percent complete, then would you say what you saw yesterday, eighty-five percent complete? I mean, things need to be buttoned up yet, but for the most part, they're done. Um, but when we arrived Tuesday morning. Basically, some teachers and staff came back, they had boxes in their classrooms that still had to be unpacked. So, um, I wanna thank our facility staff, I wanna thank our teachers. Fair professionals, administrators, office staff, technology. Uh, everyone who uh, put in to make our classrooms fully ready, uh, come this morning. Uh, that was not an easy lift by any stretch, however, the finished product is really uh, beautiful. We had a cook and chase and those rooms that were renovated. New floors, new ceilings, new entryways, new cabinetry. Um, but again, there's still sinks that need to be installed, some valance, valances that need to be kind of put in around the uh. The cat network and the, the ceiling and some spots in Cook, there's still terrazzo floor that needs to be redone. Uh, but the bulk of the work is there and uh, we do have an excellent finished product. Similarly, uh, the turf field at Ed Kennedy Field is fully installed. So that's the turf field. What you see there, it has all the uh. Uh, the uh, the bill that's, you know, that goes into it. Um, they are also right now working on the track, we're expecting that to be done in the next couple of weeks. And then a fencing will go around the field as well at that time. Uh, so that's wrapping up very nicely, and as President Crumley shared before. A lot of that material was staged in the student parking lot, so that was. Uh, I got home last night and I remembered I forgot to talk to Richard Dame about whether that stuff's getting moved today. Came in at seven AM and it was all, so uh, good news there. Um, the board tonight will be acting on two change orders and an allowance authorization. Uh, for room renovations at Cook and soil conditions at Ed Kennedy Field. Uh, these have all been reported to the board in various fashions, uh, or at various meetings before. Uh, it's the foam insulation instead of the uh, the, the bat insulation at Cook. The uh, new moisture barrier on slab at Cook. Uh, some asbestos abatement at Cook. And removing unsuitable soils of the substrata from Ed Kennedy Field, you may recall that they found all sorts of stuff when they feared that. So that work's been done, I had shared it with the board previously. Um, it's all, it was all very necessary work. I think that's all they have around uh, capital project.
Any questions surrounding capital project update? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Uh, upcoming events are listed in your agenda. Uh, community events, um, upcoming events, I'm sorry, I'm gonna backtrack just a little bit. Um. I don't know if you've got, guys have read your emails, on nine twenty-four. There is a uh, Sullivan Renes. Sullivan one eighty is having a uh. An awards dinner slash ceremony, the Cook School is in the running for a very large grant from them. Um, I believe you can go on the Sullivan one eighty website and sign up to attend. Um, that presentation of uh, their grants, um, it's a very nice event that they put together at Bethel Woods in the um, event gallery. So if you would like to attend that, uh, please go on the Sullivan one eighty website. And uh, RSVP. For the event and uh, it's pretty easy, they just send you through a link to uh, RSVP for that. So if anybody's interested, please uh, go ahead and do that. Um, community events, um. Lots of nice articles there, um, surrounding the school post-graduates and um. All the wonderful things going on. Anne Marie, is there any questions or comments from the public? Okay. Moving on from there, we have superintendent updating information. Dr. Matthew Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley, so I, I was remiss in not uh, also expressing when my capital project update. Uh, my appreciation of the work that uh, our architects, BBS architects, our construction managers, schoolhouse construction. And the uh, the general contractors and all of our, our subcontractors. Uh, for the work at Cook, Chase and the Ed Kennedy Field, uh, in particular. Uh, obviously BBS, schoolhouse, uh, renewed construction, which were the, the GC, the general contractors of Cook. And Clark Companies, the general contractors of the field. Very pleased with the quality of the work and uh, you'll get to see it soon and uh, the timeliness in which it was done, so special thanks to them. Special congratulations to. Uh, a, our newest, or I guess, second newest assistant principal. At Monticello High School, Robert Kessler, congratulations, Mr. Kessler. Mr. Kessler had been serving as an interim the past uh, six months or so. Um, and he jumped into the pool of becoming an administrator, he's recently gained his certification. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Kessler, thank, looking forward to it, yep. Some other welcomes to our faculty, uh, Christian Longera is, uh, they're not here tonight, but I do wanna recognize them. Christian Longera is a new elementary teacher at Rutherford. Uh, Marina Clarkover is a new art teacher at Rutherford. Uh, Diana Justice is a new elementary teacher at Rutherford as well. And Justin Driever is our new athletic trainer. Uh, for district-wide interscholastic athletics and he'll be beginning in two weeks, so welcome, all of them. And as we mentioned earlier, we do, I do have a special announcement and this was uh, shared with our Hall of Distinction Committee. Uh, and the Board of Education previously, but we will be going forward and I've notified the inductees, we have two new inductees. To our Hall of Distinction for the upcoming uh, induction ceremony on October third. Uh, Daniel Graves, uh, who is a uh, I, I guess a former retired. Um, held many offices in Sullivan County and the town of Thompson, I believe. Uh, an alumni of Monticello High School as well, and Alex Cabrero, who is a journalist uh, currently in Utah. Um, uh, he's also an alumni, he will be inducted as well, so we have two new inductees to the Hall of Distinction. Uh, this. The uh. Refreshments begin at four thirty on Friday, October third, and the induction ceremony itself starts at five. Uh, I've made email contact with Mr. Cabrero, he's very excited, and it's cooked directly with Mr. Graves, he too is very excited. So we're looking forward to that, I wanna thank uh, the members of the Hall of Distinction Committee, uh, Ms. LaRusso. Uh, Ms. Galligan, Ms. Riley, and Ms. Wiedowski. Uh, for serving on that committee and all the committee members, so more to come there. I'm also very pleased to share, and I made this announcement yesterday at our uh. Our opening uh, plenary session uh, with all staff. The Sullivan County School Boards Association uh, will be recognizing uh, Ryan Jasper. As its outstanding educator from the Monticello Central School District, and Heather Fassel as a friend to education. From the Monticello Central School District at its awards ceremony on October sixth at the Villa Roma. Uh, I believe that uh, dinner award ceremony, uh, in, information was sent to all the board members. Uh, you're welcome to attend, so congratulations to, to Mr. Jasper and Ms. Fassel. Uh, just by way of uh, sharing information, uh, the New York State School Boards Association published. A uh, a report on teacher shortages and what school districts might do. Uh, some of it is uh, interesting and things that we wanna try on. Uh, and I, I've shared some of those before with the board, like state interviews. Uh, it does mention that in there, however, I haven't seen like the practical how to do it or school districts that are doing it. Uh, I think it's a wonderful concept, but you know, the actual practicalities of it, sometimes it gets a little sticky, but it is something that I will be exploring further. Uh, and there are a number of strategies in there that we are already doing, or the board has committed to relative to working conditions. Opportunities for professional growth, you heard discussions about the instructional coaches. Uh, and staff compensation, we have, uh, I think as a district. Uh, made some improvements in our uh, compensation packages for employees. Last but not least, today was opening day for students and it was, it's always an exciting day, the weather cooperated. Um, and I wanna thank our, our administrators, our faculty staff, the buildings look great. Uh, it was a pretty big lift from. The shape that things were in on Tuesday morning. Uh, to where we were this morning and they threw like a, a, a water outage yesterday, just to, you know, kinda set us back a little bit, but we navigated that as well. Uh, I just wanna thank all of our staff for everything that they did to, to ready our schools. Great to see kids back, excited about learning, and yes, we began day one of implementation of the cell phone ban. And uh, the anecdotal feedback I've received thus far was very positive. Uh, I, so I was at the middle school and the high school first thing in the morning. Um, what I saw at the middle school at the time, uh, they were in homeroom, all the students were in the classrooms, they had their pouches. I think the biggest issue at that time was students had already like closed their, like, tied with a magnet and closed it. Then they had to go get the magnets to open it because it wasn't just, you know, open and close. Um, and at the high school, obviously, if you're not familiar with high school opening day, there's a pretty big turnout at the guidance office. While kids who should have had their uh, schedules or had changes to their schedules in the last week were getting their updated schedules. Once that got settled in, then kids went to their first period class and then they rolled out the pouches and then they were expected to put them away. I came back the last period, I walked into the cafeteria, there was a study hall in there with I'd say maybe fifty kids in it. I saw no phones out. I saw kids talking to each other, I saw kids playing cards, I saw kids interacting. Um, the feedback I got from Ms. Gore at the high school, I haven't, I'll touch base with this class and check tomorrow. Um, obviously, teenagers being teenagers may have been coy about where they might have been stashing their phone and not telling people. Um, some kids had to be reminded to put them in the bags, but there were, as far as I'm aware of, no kind of open acts of defiance and. You know, kids getting the discipline on, uh, you know, insubordination or things like that. Um, and what I saw at the end of the day where kids survived. Um, there were no major issues that I'm aware of and uh, I think for day one, it was a very successful implementation. We'll see how many come back tomorrow with their pouches like they're supposed to. Uh, but we do have a plan for that as well, in the event that they don't come back with their pouches. Any questions on that?
They take the pouches home?
They take the pouches home, they bring them back.
Well, actually have to be determined.
Yeah, well, that's the plan. We do, just for everyone's information, in the event a kid goes home and forgot to. Open it, there are magnets posted on the outside of the buildings where they can, they're gonna be open this time of night where. Eric or Kevin have to go back and, and tap it, they can open it that way.
Good. Any questions for Dr. Evans?
I do have one quick question, I've been doing this, do we have students that drive to BOSEs for VOTAC?
I believe we do.
Were there issues today with them driving?
None that I'm aware of. I can look into that, but. Yeah, the first answer is yes. I know we did last year, but I wasn't aware of anything today.
I'm just, cause I heard that BOSEs has changed policy or students aren't supposed to drive in, I don't know if that is true or not, I was just wondering if we had issues with.
I can look into that, I haven't heard anything recently.
They should just be happy they finished all the construction on Ferndale Looms Street.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Uh, moving on from there, we have assistant superintendent for business update, uh, Mrs. Feller.
Thanks to President Crumley this evening, um, on my report.
Guys, are we even during Lisa's thing?
Yeah. It's okay, go ahead. Okay, so we have the um. Final contract with Musco, which is the lighting vendor on the field and um. Obviously, the contract signature didn't hold up them installing the lights, so it was just a couple of things. That we had to negotiate, um, Dr. Evans already spoke about the change orders. I also have the Aster Services Facilities Use Agreement, that's for them to occupy that space in the high school for. Um, referrals for mental health services. And finally, a. Special education contract with the Judge Rockford Educational Center for placement for one of our students.
Any questions for Lisa?
Yes, Lisa, how much do we spend a year, students going to like these residential facilities?
Millions. We increase the year's budget by a million dollars. So I'm gonna say it's probably about two and a half million we spend. Um, district. Private placements, not including BOSEs. Just other places.
And that includes the transportation cost and all? So we have that and then on top of transportation costs.
How do we go about making up better through the district? Is there any? Any weight, I know it's a heavy lift, but I mean.
I think like, the example of the Judge Rockford Center, that's a pretty extreme case, right? That, that's something, a service that isn't local, probably a service we cannot ever replicate here, right? Um, but we are starting conversations with the People Personal Services Department about trying to build programs here. Uh, particularly for, let's say, students on the spectrum with autism. Because we do suspect that we're at a critical mass now with, you know, how many students we're sending to, let's say, Orange Uster BOSEs or even Sullivan BOSEs. And do we have a critical mass of kids that we could possibly service here at a similar or lesser cost? So, those conversations are starting to happen. Um, I do wanna credit. Uh, People Personal Services because I think they were a bit more, they gave a bit more scrutiny this year on kids going out of district. Um, I did hear today from uh, some staff about, you know, the, the number of kids that we're keeping here that. You know, maybe this isn't the uh, the, the, the most, the best environment for them. So, I think BPS was very judicious with it, but we are seeing increased numbers of students with. Uh, particularly uh, autism, uh, but other uh, uh, needs as well. And, as you all know, there's shortage, labor shortages all around, so those agencies are also. Increasing their costs because they're trying to be more competitive in their labor markets as well. Not an easy problem to fix, but.
Any other questions uh, regarding update on uh. Business? Thank you very much, Mrs. Feller. Uh, moving on from there, we have our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, updating information, so this, Mrs. Carle.
Thank you, President Crumley, good evening again. Um, so I have one contract on for tonight and that is the McBride Hill contract, uh, just a little bit about that, we um, currently. Have software that we use to support our wonders, um, literacy program for literacy curriculum for RISD three through five. Um, we started this particular curriculum back in twenty twenty. And we normally uh, were purchasing these site licenses through BOSEs. Uh, BOSE stopped supporting the twenty twenty version of wonders and so we had to go directly to the vendor. Uh Bosse stopped supporting the twenty twenty version of wonders and so we had to go directly to the vendor. Um because we didn't wanna have to update all of our um reading curriculum and our ELA curriculum at this point. Um so that's what this contract is for, it is uh. Site licenses for curriculum that we already have in place and have since twenty twenty, but we need to renew them every year. Um so that's the first thing I have and then I, as mentioned already a little bit today. Um we talked about the region's exam, so in August, uh we sent out our region's exams to be graded for two reasons. Basically, uh it's hard to get staff in August to grade those region's exams. Um and anytime we have our region's exams graded on it from an outside source. It helps improve in case we're audited by the state that we didn't grade them in-house. Um so that happened this year, they were sent out the day the region's finished. Um they were sent to a testing company that grades in Endicott. Um that they received them within a couple of days of being sent out, they were graded within two days, sent them back to us. For some reason, one of the boxes never reached us and were sent back to the grading company. Um and they immediately sent them back to us, so we did receive those today, they have been scanned this afternoon when I left my office to come here. Um we were starting to get results, so when they get scanned, they go to the RIC. Um and the RIC then uh sends us the, or the uh scoring results. And so we should have all of those, I'm hoping, at the latest by tomorrow afternoon. Um so parents can start to call their guidance, their students' guidance counselor to get that information. Uh I would say at the earliest tomorrow afternoon, uh but it might take until Monday to get that information. Um next, uh the McKinney Vento um grant that we've applied for and received in the past. We just finished a three-year cycle with that grant. Uh so it ended August thirty-first of of this year. Uh there was an RFP, so a request for proposal put out by the state to apply for the next three-year cycle. Uh those uh proposals were due by, I think, mid-June, we did give it in on time, um this grant. Comes out of the PPS office, so Michelle McCoy is in charge of applying for and maintaining that grant. Uh she did apply for it, uh we received a denial letter yesterday saying that we. Um did not get the grant, um which is a substantial um hit for our our homeless program because we do. Uh take a lot of the services that we're able to give our homeless students um from that money. So we are in the process of trying to find out why we were denied, um and if there's anything that we can do. To appeal that decision, um so as soon as we get that information, I will update the board. And the last thing, um there was an article in The Democrat this week about um the county causing childcare subsidies. So I just wanted to talk to you about that a little bit, so our healthy, um our our students that go to healthy kids um for the. After-school program, the before-school program, again, the district does not fund that in any capacity, that is completely parent uh self-pay. Um parents that are eligible for a childcare subsidy through um OCFS, they're able to apply for that. And either get a part of or all of the childcare costs for healthy kids covered by that. Uh so in talking with a few individuals since I, this article came out, what we're finding is. Uh the governor, in her current budget, put a lot more money into the budget for childcare subsidy. Uh I think the intention was to have individual families that um. Were way above the federal poverty threshold, be able to get some type of a subsidy, so that's what that additional money was put in for. So so many people have been applying that and the money is not coming in quick enough from the state. So they've frozen um any applications for individuals that are either. Brand-new applications and are above um the threshold for for poverty. And uh anybody that is at that threshold or below um should be approved. Uh we're hearing that they're not affected and we're also hearing anybody that has been approved and is still within their recertification period. Where they don't have to recertify yet, they shouldn't be affected, so if you should hear anything from parents um regarding that. That's what we're finding out right now and if I get more information, I will update you on that as well. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Uh moving on from there, we have our action. Action items, I'll throw this over to Ms. Galligan.
So President Crum- Crumley, let me know if I'm doing this right. I'd like to make a motion to amend. Um like to amend action item T twelve to reflect the appointment. Of uh trustee Ashley Riley as a delegate and Helen Jersey as an alternate delegate to the Sullivan County School Board.
Second on that motion, by Ms. Jersey, any discussion? All in favor? T twelve is now amended to reflect Ashley Riley as delegate and um Helen Jersey as alternate.
President Crumley, I would like to make a motion to take action items T one through T fourteen as a group.
Do I have a second on that? By Ms. Kostowski, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
President Crumley, I would like to make a motion to approve action items T one through T fourteen as a group.
I have a second on that. Mr. Cologne, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you very much, Mrs. Galligan. Uh moving on from there, we have uh correspondence, none at this time. Any questions or comments from the public? None at this time. Motion to adjourn. Mrs. LaRusso, second by Ms. Kostowski, any discussion, all in favor?